Health Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, but I have two meetings scheduled. The meeting on, to look at demolition procedures in the code is scheduled for June 13th. And we have a meeting on LGBTQ protection scheduled for June 17th.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks, Mr. Heffinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report at this time and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Water Utilities, Mr. Starcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, but I do have a meeting scheduled on the 19th of June.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have sub-ord for finance, 1995 grant application, burn, JAG grant, 1996, amend ordinance 7519, MCRSC lifeguard pay effective date, 1997 bids North Texaway Extension, 1998 Wheeling and Lake Erie Railroad Crossing Agreement, 1999 rezoned 1088 South Court Street from a R3 to a C3, 19100 increase expenditure of Core and Main Water Department in 19102, purchase of a 2019 F-550 Ford Series SD for the Streets Department. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, I just wanted to start with the Memorial Day Parade. I'm always proud of our community, the number of folks that came out and filled up our square on both sides of the street, as well as all along Liberty Street, between the square and the cemetery, and then the cemetery itself. Just a strong reverence and respect for the veterans, and very much appreciated. The parking deck, construction of the parking deck immediately south of the City Hall here will commence later this summer. We're still working out the details on getting the new bid packets out and seeing if we can expedite the building timeline to try to stay as close on track as what we were. For the public's benefit, though, there are long-term lots available, existing and available already, at the southeast corner of West Liberty and South Elmwood. The city purchased from the county a lot in the 200 block of South Elmwood on the west side, which is across from the former Napa Auto Parts, and as well as the existing parking deck behind the Common Pleas Court. We know that this is going to cause a bit of inconvenience, but there's no way for us to build the parking deck and still have cars on the property or nearby. The farmers markets began on May 18th and will continue into the fall from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM each Saturday. Tomorrow, May 29th, from noon to 2:00, there's a Drug Court Awareness Event on Public Square for anybody that's interested. The Medina City Schools End-of-School Dance Party was going to be on the square on May 30th. I'm sorry, that is going to be on the square, May 30th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The farmer's market I talked about, Saturday 6/1, June 1, is the Kids' Day of Play on the square. And also on 6/1 in the evening, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, is the Ormaco Jazz Under the Stars on our Public Square, and there's no charge for that. And last but not least, the Medina Community Band Concerts start every Friday night with the first concert on June 7th at 8:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's an item, the first item on the agenda I will talk about when we get there.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Kinney, Police Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a report. Just a couple of quick updates from the Rec Center. I wanted to thank all the patrons who came out to the memorial pool yesterday. It was a little chilly in the morning to swim, but the pool was at 78 degrees and climbing. We were supposed to have some bad weather again this week, so watch out for closings on our Facebook page. Also, please note that if the outdoor pool is closed, the entire Rec Center is available to all season members and passholders. You're not just limited to the pools at the Rec Center on those days either. The roof project has begun. This will run through September, so please be patient with the fieldhouse and the rec pool closing schedules. The parking lot repairs are scheduled to begin Monday, June 3rd, pending weather, and the exit for, the PAC will be the entrance and exit for those days of repairs. I wanted to send a special thank you to the mayor and Miles Reed for presenting out the last two of our last three senior lecture series this month. The seniors greatly appreciate their presentations, and they're always well-informed. Lastly, the next scheduled Rec Advisory Board meeting will be Thursday, June 18th at 7:30 at the Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladish, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report.
Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of quick items. West Smith Road Project is progressing. The road will remain closed until approximately mid-August of this year. Additionally, Ohio Edison has been working on removing some old poles and adding new poles in and around the construction site of the proposed parking deck. There will be an impact with power for some of these businesses and residents. Property owners will be notified of the same, so we appreciate the public's patience and understanding. You heard the mayor talk about the parking structure. The city engineering department issued an RFP for the parking structure. Submittals for design-build proposals will be due July 8th, 2019, at 10:00 AM, so it's moving right along.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayor's appointments, we have two of them. If there's no objection, I'll take them together. Business Development Committee, Bethany Dentler for Term Expiring 123119, and the CIA Housing Council, Bethany Dentler, Term Expiring 123121.
Move to approve the mayor's appointments.
Second.
Any discussion on the mayor's appointments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the mayor's appointments?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Notices, Communications, and Petitions, there's none unfinished business, there's none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments should be directed to the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front, right microphone, and state their name and address, so it can be entered in the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of a majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Is there? Nope. We have to hit the button. Is there a button on the bottom there?
Where it says push. Yeah, nice. So, good evening. My name is Dan White. I reside at 961 Norwegian Wood Drive. And I want to first apologize that I'm coming to complain. It's my first time attending one of the meetings. And I really want to start off first saying, my family, we love living in the city of Medina. Talking about the Memorial Day Parade, we had a great time. Parade was wonderful, fantastic. We've been in Medina for 10 years, and we love it here. We have, when we have friends and family over, we love, especially from out of town, we take them to the square. They love what we do at the historic downtown, how vibrant it is, the gazebo. It's a great place to basically raise a family, as all of you are keenly aware of. Appreciate our police officers driving through the neighborhood, checking on, just making sure everybody's fine and waving as they go by, so thank you for that. It's a great place. I'm here today to talk a little bit about Carlisle Brake Factory. I know you've been made aware that it's loud, and sometimes we smell aromas and things of that nature. I would love to find some kind of solution in the sense of something natural. One of our neighbors was talking about potentially, could we build a mound? And I'm thinking, maybe similar to like what the Waymouth Country Club has out there, where it has the high hills with the pine trees, or something of that nature that could help block that off. I don't know if that's something that the council's considering. I know we've been told that you're, we're looking into, people are looking into it, that there's supposed to be a meeting scheduled with residents of the community. I haven't been informed of that, and I know a few others don't know when or if that's going to happen. So, that's our concern, my concern at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Shields has an update, I believe.
I was going to say, we did have a meeting with Carlisle Brake, the plant manager and their safety director, on Friday.
Okay.
And we talked to them about the concerns. We walked the perimeter of the building. The mound is probably not an option because they hauled out a lot of dirt from the area where they want to expand eventually, so it wouldn't make sense to bring dirt back in. The other thing we realized is that, or I realized for the first time, a large portion of the woods behind that property is actually owned by the Ohio Army Reserves there, the National Guard. It's not their property to do something with. Carlisle comes right to the edge of the woods there that actually belong to the National Guard. But we did talk to them about some of the things they could do. We did talk about a sound wall. It's not in their budget right now to put a sound wall up, but we were going to help look for some grants and some funding. So, we also asked them about some restrictions on the hours of operation. So, it was a good meeting where we let them know the concerns from our ward meeting and from the emails that Mr. Gladish has been receiving from residents. They were going to go back and see what they could address to help us out with some of those issues. So, we're in the early stages. We just had that meeting on Friday. So, we were going to give them a little time to get us a response after we shared with them what the concerns were.
Great.
And I don't, the mayor was with me, and Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director, and the building official, Dan Gladish, were all there too, so.
Well, thank you for working with us on that and looking for those solutions. You know, I should start off saying too, that we're so thankful for economic development and growth in our community. We want that, we support that, so, but with all things, whether you're growing or diminishing, there are problems that come with it, so we appreciate all your effort on our behalf.
And I will say, from my opinion, that's the first time I've met with Carlisle directly. They were very open to trying to be a good neighbor, so they heard us, they took some good notes. They said, "Let us see what we can do about some of these things, and we're going to get back with us." And then, once we have an answer, we'll share that with the neighborhood as well.
And I'd be more than willing to talk with Carlisle as well, to help, you know, just find a solution, and, but we appreciate your workforce.
And we did tell them, there's some neighbors that are willing to talk and share a little bit more. And we had several people at the ward meeting who offered to let them come and stay in their house in the evening too, so we did share that.
Yeah, I imagine so. Very good.
So, early stages, but we feel like we had a good meeting with them.
Good.
Told them what the concerns were. We were, as a city, we were going to work on, if there's some grants for maybe a sound wall as opposed to the dirt mound. The dirt mound's just not going to fit on that property. But we were going to look into seeing what we could do from a city point of view to help with funding for possibly a sound wall that could maybe later be moved if they were going to expand. And then, they had some things from our concerns that they were going to go back and try to figure out what they could do to address and help us.
Did I understand you correctly, are they looking to expand further?
Long-term plans, yes.
Okay.
That's why they cleared that land.
Deeper into the woods, or more?
Not deeper into the woods, no. And actually, it's where the land's already cleared, where they took out the dirt. And they said it would not make sense to bring dirt back in to build a mound on their property when that's the area that's identified for future expansion.
So, would it take, I'm, just so, so would it take it closer to the homes, or they would go more south, like towards Chippewa Lake? Do you know?
It would, it's in the back of the property.
Back of the property, towards the woods closer.
But where the woods are at, again, where the woods come up to the edge of their property, that, those are not their woods. That is the National Guard's property.
Okay. Is the National Guard on board with like selling them, or are they going to keep that property, as far as you know?
As far as we know, I don't think the National Guard.
So, it's not optional, not an option for them? I guess the state of Ohio could sell it to them. Okay.
And it's not a set they're going to expand, but that's an option somewhere. They did design this latest expansion. If they needed to add on again, they've cleared the land. So, there's nothing more that's going to be cleared, but they certainly didn't want to bring dirt back into an area that they have identified, and there's no timetable, no time soon. They have, I believe, a Solon Plant and another Ohio Plant where they said some of those lines could be combined, but.
So, I will share with you, sir, I was in manufacturing before I got into police work. And I worked for a division of MTD in Valley City where they did metal stamping, which is what they're doing here. But their system versus in the 70s, what I observed, I mean, you could literally, from here to probably Sully's, there was a lake in between the plastics division I was working out of and the metal stamping, where they were, where they were stamping hoods and fenders for tractors and things like that. And I mean, all you heard was that bang, bang, bang. In this facility, they have specialized bases under these 30-ton presses. So, they come down and stamp the machine, and you could be standing three feet away, and you don't feel the floor vibrate with 30 tons of pressure. And the reason for that is the foundation is on rubber, so it absorbs the impact, which then lessens the sound. And the reason that they built it, and built it here in Medina and made this investment, is closer than from me to you away, they have laser cutters that cut out the pieces that then go into the machines to be stamped, and that laser can't be bounced as a result of those presses. So, it was pretty amazing, the technology there, and the more we observed it and heard it inside, as well as went outside, it seemed like a great deal of the sound seems to be coming from when they're taking the scrap metal out and putting it in the bins, which are on the house side of the property. And we also talked to them about possibly moving it, but what they, what they built was an overhang, probably 30, 40 feet overhang with these large gondolas. And so, it's not a matter of just moving the bin. They would really have to change, and the south side that you mentioned, where it's Chippewa Lake, is all their loading dock, so then they would be in the way of that. So, part of what we talked to them about is restricting, taking that scrap outside, even if they had to put it in larger bins inside, and then during the day, take it outside where it's not as problematic as in the middle of the night. So, they were very receptive to our concerns and what we need to accomplish, and we're hopeful that we can, we can work to a positive resolution.
Good. Thanks for your explanation. That makes sense, because the noise does vary, you know, how loud it is, so.
Yes, sir. Understood.
So, they did say they would analyze things, see if they could get us an answer to maybe restrict those hours that they're doing that. Has it got any better, do you think, since?
This weekend was great, really. I mean, we had friends and family over, and my wife's parents, and they're like, "Whoa, that factory is really quiet this weekend. You hardly even notice it." So, there are times it's really good where you're, what you're saying makes sense, yeah. So, maybe it's just continuing to coordinate timing and things of that nature. I do like the sound barrier idea, because in the wintertime, the light is really, I mean, not to be picky, it is what it is, right? But there's a lot worse problems in the world, but.
And we noticed that right now. All the leaves are back on the trees, which makes a big difference, too.
Does make a big difference, right, exactly. Good. Thank you. I'm sure I went over my five minutes. I appreciate the extended time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Yes.
Okay. So, I'm Rosalia Way, and I live 961 Norwegian Wood Drive, Medina, Ohio. And I really like Medina, and like, just, like, there's like, you know, like parks and swimming pools, and I think it's really good. And I think just what Dad said, like, that, like, the factory, like, I understand that it's for like, good, well, like to make good products and stuff. I just, and like, what you said, like, like maybe they could reduce like the sound by, what, putting the bins, the metal and reducing that. Yeah, and then just, yeah, like the lights, and they are pretty right, and the leaves are kind of making sure that that's okay, so it's not as bad. But, I mean, and, but the smells, like, we've been back there, because there's like a trail that goes through the woods, and you can see it, and there's like, I mean, and you can, and you can like still like smell the smells and stuff, and I don't know like if there's any way to prevent that, but, like, and it is pretty strong sometimes. Like, it kind of personally made me dizzy sometimes. But, I mean, yeah, and I'm not like trying to make like a complete argument, I just wanted to say that. But I do like Medina, otherwise, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rosalia. And tell your dad that he doesn't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting if he doesn't want to, just to let him know.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances resolutions. We have ordinance 7819, and ordinance, amending ordinance number 7519, passed May 13, 2019, relative to salary schedule pertaining to lifeguards at the Medina Community Recreation Center.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Wright. Oh, not Mr. Wright, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. When we passed this amendment to the lifeguard pay, we didn't specify when it would begin. I want to specify that it begins at the beginning of a pay period, so we're not paying lifeguards two different rates in the same pay period.
Okay. Any further questions? Any emergency clauses to get this done quicker than sooner or later? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Here.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion, ordinance 7819 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 7919, in order to amending the program and activity fee structure for the Medina Community Recreation Center.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance 79-19 is to update our program and activity fees. These numbers are setting maximum fees charged and do not necessarily reflect what they're going to be. The reason we took off the special and community events fee structure is that those were deemed too broad of fees. Council wanted us to narrow those down, those charges, and how they'll be assessed, so thank you.
Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 7919 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 8019, in order to authorize the mayor to enter amendment number 11 to the agreement with Delta Airport Consultants, Inc., to provide designing consulting work for the North Detention Basin Project at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are required by the County of Medina to construct a detention basin to handle surface water runoff at the Medina Airport. This agreement is an agreement between the city of Medina and Delta Airport Consultants, who are our engineers at the airport, that authorized the payment to Delta for the design work and the coordination with the FAA on the plans for this construction.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of your ordinance?
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 80-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 8119, in order to authorize an increase of expenditure to Ohio Rail Development Corporation for the fiscal year '17 chip fare housing program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mendel?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to increase our existing purchase order that we have for paying out ORDC, who's our consultant, our hired consultant, to administer our chip program. We just need to increase it by $2,000 to help pay for the fare housing portion of their, of their contract. Thank you.
Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Ordinance 81-19 passes 7-0.
Resolution 8219, a resolution authorizes the mayor to file an application for grant assistance with the Bureau of Justice Assistance, U.S. Department of Justice for Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant JAG Program for the Police Department.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and resolution. Chief Kinney?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're requesting permission to apply for the Burn JAG grant to fund a traffic enforcement officer. It's going to be a partial grant for the salary of that officer. Emergency clause is requested because the grant application is due June 3rd, 2019. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the resolution and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Emergency clause passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes 8219. I mean, I'm sorry, Resolution 8219 passes 7-0.
Council comments? Mr. Heffinger?
Thank you. Just want to remind everybody, this is the last week of school, so all the kids will be out this summer. Please drive safely. There will be a lot of children around where they're not usually around, so enjoy your summer, kids. I know I will as a teacher. Also, coming up this weekend is the annual Kids' Day of Safety on the square, which the mayor pointed out, and we will be having our third City Hall table there. We'll have Chief Painter, Chief Kinney, and Councilman Starcher will be there to answer your questions. And I want to thank Mr. Wright and Councilman Lamb, who were there last week to answer questions.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mr. President?
Oh, go ahead, Danny.
No. I just have one, one comment. This is for the mayor and Mr. Pacoli. We all, as citizens, we all enjoyed the Memorial Day Parade and was able to participate in the significance of, of the meaning of it. I'm amazed every year, though, and more so this year, at the presentation of the Spring Grove Cemetery. And I'd just like to pass along to the mayor and Mr. Pacoli that the cemetery sextons, James Hoyt and his staff, even though it's limited, did just such a remarkable job, and everybody that was there. I mean, I was down there during the ceremonies and heard several comments, not only with, with the cleanliness and the, and the shape of the chapel and the mausoleum, but the grounds with, you know, with the wet season that we, we've had so far, that the grounds look so good. So, I just, I'm always amazed and proud and just pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two, two things. One, last week I had the privilege of serving on a municipal court jury. I think everybody should take an opportunity to do that. You get to see how the city actually works, or at least go and watch how a court proceeding goes. I know Jim and John, you don't have to, Greg, you don't have to. But it was interesting to see how our dollars are spent with, with our prosecutors and the judge and the like, and how the, the whole process flows, so I recommend it. And lastly, and most importantly, I want to thank all the veterans for their services. Some gave all, or some gave some and some gave all. And for those who did give all, they are the reason that we're able to do what we do here today, that we have our freedoms, and keep that in mind anytime you see a veteran. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson, follow-up?
Yes, I just kind of misquoted. I'm always used to praising Mr. Pacoli, but the praise should have went more so this time to our Parks Director, Jansen Worley.
Yeah, that sounds better.
And along with Mr. Pacoli and, and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a couple of things, but first off, I know this is hard to believe, but I believe I made a mistake. The date for the demo special legislation meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, is June 12th. It is a Wednesday, right? I, I could blame somebody else for that date I have written down, but I'm not going to do that.
You are correct.
June 12th. Good?
Good.
Okay. Wouldn't want everybody to show up on June 13th and miss, miss this.
Yeah, but they'd get to see a planning meeting then.
Thanks, Paul. And the other things I have is, I want to share is this. The community garden is, is well on its way to going forward. The county has been, been extremely cooperative in, in fleshing out the details that, that needed to be attended to prior to that property being used for the community garden. We have secured a, the insurance for the organization that's going to, they're going to go there. We're, we will, are working on a lease with the county. And so, in, in very short order, the community garden seems to be well on its way to being a success story. The farm market, I was there on the, at the farm market. I want to thank Eric Heffinger, the Ward 3-